Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas planning board meeting for January 23rd, 2018. The meeting is being recorded and is available for viewing on the Douglas public access channel and on the Douglas website. We'll come to order at 7:03. And first item we'll take is A&R plan here's to of Alice Chase, Orange Street.
Good evening, folks. Lance Anderson Heritage Design Group. It's okay?
Yeah.
A&R lot, four acres. We had previously done this one a few meetings ago on Orange Street. Really straightforward. Any questions? I'll take them.
Was this the one that we cut this into like 1A, 1B?
This is lot, this is lot 1.
Correct.
Yep.
We did an A&R a couple of meetings ago.
Yep.
And we, we cut. Was that from lot 1A, 1B over here? I was just trying to figure out what you, what we cut last time.
Right here. We cut this.
This one here?
Yep.
So we already cut that in half. So you're coming back for us to cut?
No, no, no. Nope.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, this is the previous.
See?
Yep.
This helps to, you know.
From when it was used before.
Yeah, this is the previous.
Okay.
I, um, so look this way.
I got a question.
This drawing, shorthand drawing.
Is that my drawing?
What's the little black rectangle below lot 2?
Oh, that's an existing law.
Existing what?
That's an existing, that's an abut. That's an existing lot owned by someone else.
Sandra Larson.
Correct.
Uh, correct.
Stink from the remaining land.
Correct.
Why is this dotted?
It's not what we. It's an abut.
It's not germane of what.
Correct.
We cut it nice.
Oh, it doesn't have to.
How many total feet here?
402.
402.
Yeah.
Bill, any questions?
No. Uh, looks like he addressed the comments I had. It conforms. It looks straightforward, actually.
What, why is this not, just for purposes of understanding, why is this not two lots? Two, is it a 200-foot frontage?
That's up to them.
No, I know it is, but it could have been, right?
It could, I guess, if they hadn't up. Just the way the gentleman wanted to cut out.
Yep.
Taxes are all set on this?
Yes.
And is this in, uh...
Six chapter land.
Chapter land.
Yeah, it's chapter land, right?
So are we going through the process?
The owner knows that.
Yeah.
As we mentioned on the last parcel as well.
Right.
Which, and we, we trust you're going to relay that to the owner.
Yeah, he knows that.
There is a process.
And this plan hasn't been recorded yet.
Yeah, okay.
He, he has, he's in possession of the My Lot.
Yeah.
And he hasn't recorded it as of this afternoon.
Okay, because there's a right of.
First refusal.
To the town.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, we're limited. I talked to the assessor's office about that. We're limited in what we can do to enforce that.
Right.
But there is a process and.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we go through the process.
We can only make them aware that there's a process. Uh, one of the parcels across the street, it's my understanding, was chapter land and they carved it out and they didn't go through the process.
What happens then?
Nothing.
Nothing happened?
I guess we could take them to court and pursue it.
Yeah, I, I, that would be, that'd be foolish, but I, the process should be followed. That's all, that's all. Okay, anybody got any questions on it?
Well, Dallas land, the, just Alice Chase remaining land.
Yeah. All right, wanna make a motion?
One of yours?
Making a motion. You know, so, get a motion to endorse the, uh, A&R for the heirs of Alice Chase at 1197 Maple Street, uh, for the lot, no, sorry.
Orange Street.
On Orange Street.
Watch me by Mike Z, seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion? I would prefer.
Aye.
Pose, explain.
Okay.
I was checking.
Sign it now, get them out of here. We'll sign them while, and then we can sign the others at the end of the night.
What's the fight architects?
Oh my God.
I tested it.
Pass.
I think I'll, and I'll do.
Everyone's out, we'll do the.
We can do the last.
We're still gonna.
Well.
I love it.
I love it up to you guys.
Hey, Grace.
Hey, Tracy.
We just approved of the A&R.
Take it, take it, take it, sign it.
Where, where are the stamps?
Okay.
Fifty fifty on that one.
Fifty fifty.
By the time you get the stamp.
I don't know how many you need of that.
Four.
Okay.
There you go, that's four.
We assign more than we need.
Alright.
Glasses.
Yeah.
Somebody signed.
Uh.
There's a My Lot.
That was Oxford.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got that.
Everything was with the, uh.
Step out of that.
So.
I can see.
Oh, it is, yeah, still.
The judge heard the case, but hasn't made a decision.
I know.
Mix it up a little bit.
Yeah. The family people were served.
There we go.
Is that still the case?
Cool.
Oh, that's done.
One, two, three.
Okay.
So that way I guess, huh? One, two, three.
Five. That's good.
Mike, you want to sign, stamp?
Yeah, now it's just a matter of.
I don't know if we need something else.
Well, I'm gonna My Lot there.
I see.
Yeah. Yeah.
Isaiah, I was gonna thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
I was a little confused with, uh.
I like this RCP.
Previous, I guess.
Pretty creative. You know, I'm saying with RCP, things we have in this town that are not. Type of zones.
Yeah.
It's different, that's all.
Yeah, well, we don't get exact, um, Millbury has a thing for like, if you have water, this is your zoning for maybe that area, let's say. If you have sewer in that area, this would be.
Oh, it'd be different, yeah.
We have something like that for the, for protection of the like district.
Yeah, but, but that's, that's a, it's a decrease on what it would be versus what Millbury has is like if you're.
Yep, a moderate decrease.
I'm gonna stamp it. Um.
She hasn't, but she didn't hold on.
I'll, I'll find him when he gets a.
I'm missing you.
It's not a bad.
Take a look at it. Take a look at it.
It encourages extension of the sewer lines.
Yeah, take a look at Millbury. Millbury was one of the ones that I was like, oh, this is.
Okay, we ready, boys?
We're following the share with the.
So it's a. Okay. Discussion. Cosma Residential Compound.
The compound.
202, 206 Maple Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ooh. I wish I could take it, can we for us, huh? Right? You can report?
Nope.
Name is Travis, Andrew Survey and Engineering, uh, here on behalf of the owner, John Cosma, who's also here tonight.
Can you pull that tripod?
This is a piece of property, 202 and 206 Maple Street. Um, this plan you see here was signed, uh, last year. Um, two conforming lots. There is this piece here, a couple different parcels. The assessor actually has it listed as one mapping parcel now. Uh, this is the address of 202. Excuse me. And, uh, this house here was cut off and is actually built now as a minimum frontage. So, um, the owner now is looking to maybe develop this parcel or a combination of these parcels into a potential residential compound. This is in the rural agricultural district. Minimum zoning requires 90,000 square feet, 200 feet of frontage. So we have provided this color plan here kind of outlining what we intend to do. This is the existing house, 202, uh, listed as lot 1. So that'll have minimum frontage on Maple Street. Um, the remaining portion of that land, as well as the land where this house is currently built now, which is 202, would be reconfigured. Uh, what we would do is bring it right away off the current existing gravel driveway that accesses this house here. So we'd bring that right away up. We'd create three lots off of this.
Yeah, what are the three lots?
So the three lots would be this lot 2, which we show this proposed have lot 3, which is this open area back here we intend to use. And then the third one is actually already built on. So in addition to the two that remain or are existing, two more we would be proposing.
So the, the parcel on the left has nothing to do with this, does that?
Um, it does because it would have to be reconfigured.
Right, in order, but it does.
But it's gaining its frontage of Maple as opposed to the new.
Right.
Right.
Right, which the RCP says has to be off that road.
And what's the proposal?
Does that mean it's part of the compound or not?
Well, it's a conforming lot. I mean, fully to zoning.
I know.
All of them actually meet current zoning.
The proposed easement is for.
This proposed easement, there's actually a barway in this stone wall. Mr. Cosma uses that to access this barn in the back. So there are two thoughts, either to make that part of his land or put an easement on that. The goal is to build a couple lots for his daughters. His daughter lives here now and he has two other daughters.
My daughter wants to run away.
Big, big city, you know?
It's, yeah.
So why don't you stay here?
Big city of Douglas.
So he wants an easement to the barn even though the barn is on its own piece of property?
That's correct. There's no easy access from the house to that barn through this.
That's not.
I see.
Yeah, 'cause I see there's a bunch of like structures or something within that easement. And then you see in the overlay, there isn't a cut in the, maybe wall here to access that. Is that a true story?
Yeah, I guess.
Looks like vehicles.
You, can you access that barn through your property?
So are those old cars in the proposed easement?
I guess what is in the back of that field?
I'm not sure. Not, not old cars. I don't know when the picture was taken.
Yeah.
Season, a few. Oh, okay.
Oh, it's an.
They're like these.
Could be anything.
And when we signed that previous plan.
It was an A&R, yeah.
It was an A&R and then the frontage that was left, yeah, right there, yeah. No, the other, yep. Okay, so there was a right of way. Is that what that was? But that's 200?
This is 200, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so there are two conforming lots. So then they put this gravel driveway in.
Okay.
That's what we're gonna propose to use as access for.
Yeah.
So lot, lot 2, it's a good, you know, compound.
And you don't have the buffer from the 210 Maple.
So the entire lot.
Correct. So you have to get a, uh, something in writing from them. I think that's what we've done.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the other kind of criteria that we don't meet. I think we meet all the other criteria, um, except we don't have that 30-foot buffer strip because there's already gravel drive. That gravel drive would be widened and upgraded to.
You should have moved it over.
Well, we can know. But the other part of it is there's an electric line running on the left side of that, which we need to.
That was new, right?
Right, for when they built this house.
New poles, yeah.
But the.
It's underground utilities?
No.
It is underground.
So couldn't you move the driveway over if you needed to?
You'd be able to the utilities.
Put it on this side, you're saying?
Utilities. I have a question on that. Um, can, can they draw multiple houses off of that type of utility line or is that a service line for the one house and they'll have to put in a new utility line to service the other houses?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, or pad mount.
Yeah, it's primary and then there's a transformer in the back, which they can come off.
So I can ask, so that entire lot, how many acres, the entire lot?
14 total. So the three compound lots have to be the 150% to 135,000, yeah, little over 3 acres, which they all are. And all have minimum frontage. Actually, we have 200 feet, I guess, minimum for a residential compound would be 50, but as you and I discussed, Bill, we had to avoid a special permit.
So I have a question. Does, are tax bills for houses that have residential compound, do they get three separate tax bills or is it one bill?
This is a definitive subdivision, okay?
Yeah.
It's using the backland pretty much.
Yeah, I don't, yeah. This is far.
Like a subdivision.
The intent on the road, how, how wide you're figuring on going with expanding the driveway. I, obviously I see, uh, what do you got, 30 by 40 by 30 deep turnaround?
Yeah.
And your proposed gravel, you're saying 16 foot wide.
16 feet wide.
You keep it at 16 because you have a 20-foot wide pad in the front, then you what, you're gonna just shrink it?
And then, yeah, so it'll kind of flare in because that's required as part of the rest. Residential compounds have that apron, that paved landing area at the beginning.
At the beginning of the street.
That's in the regs.
Yeah, that's what we had to.
Yeah, I'm just.
But then after that, the requirement is 16 feet wide of gravel.
Oh, they were probably 16.
That's not to say you couldn't exceed that.
That's, that's right. It's not currently 16, so it would have to be upgraded to the minimum of 16.
Well, they're trying to utilize one for the one house.
I know.
Serving.
I mean, 16 feet is always down.
Yeah.
We've always, on other projects, they had it widened up. I know this only servicing a couple houses here, but still, if you had a fire truck heading up and an ambulance coming down on a 16-foot road, the average fire truck's gonna be at least 886. An ambulance is gonna be at least 886.
So you're gonna clear a 30-foot right of way though and then only the 16 will be gravel? Because that's kind of like what I'm right, we need.
Yeah.
So you could.
That's not what the regs, no. They have to provide a 30-foot right of way. There can be trees and whatnot within that 30-foot right of way. Um, the, the regs only require a 16-foot wide travelable surface. And so if we want to change that, we should change the regs.
If it means anything, it's feels, it's a feel almost the whole way in on the left.
Yeah.
So if they had to pull over.
They could.
Eight foot, it's solid, um, hayfield.
Yeah.
But the, the width at the road is 40.
At the, at the road, yes. And that's just the, the, the transition. So there's roundings. That's what.
That doesn't really make any sense.
It doesn't.
20 wide, correct.
Okay.
You're talking about the apron.
Talking, no, I'm talking about the reg.
Paved apron, yeah, right.
I thought you said it was 20.
So it's 20 feet wide by 40 feet long.
Oh, 40 feet long, okay.
So the other part of this, if, if it does matter, the minimal right of way requirement is 30 feet. Um, we are proposing 50 to try to just span that existing gravel drive to keep everything within that. So we're in excess of.
Right, that's. And that.
And you're gonna do a full gravel turnaround?
Yeah, so we're gonna do a hammerhead, uh, based on the regs, again, 40 feet wide by 30 feet of depth, be able to have any emergency vehicles turn around in there.
Yeah, I know. I like that, too.
No, the.
Industrial residential, here we go again.
Yeah, so that brings up a point, yeah. The portion of this, the back portion is in industrial. There's no houses that will be proposed back on, in that industrial zone.
Just, just something we've been talking about as a.
Yeah. Change some of these regs to prevent that.
No residential.
Any questions?
No, 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 no.
No, uh, just, they, they are gonna need relief from the abutters property line, as Tracy indicated. Um, so that's one thing that the board, you know, it's, it's not dissimilar from what was proposed up on Northwest Main Street, um, aside from the number of lots.
Right.
Um, so, you know, they addressed, pretty much they took the regs and addressed every comment. So I, I, I mean.
I think it's pretty clear.
Laid it out fairly clearly.
This is just strictly for discussion tonight.
It is.
You wanna get IP, how the board feels about it?
Yeah. Are you planning on leaving the, the zoning split on the property? Are you gonna try to go through and have it changed so it's all residential? Or are you just gonna leave it the way it is?
That would require a town meeting.
Early 80s, 90s, I never even knew there was.
Zoning change back then.
I didn't know it was industrial. I thought.
Was all residential.
Showed, I know.
That, that strip has been attempted to have been rezoned, um, at a recent town meeting.
Yeah.
And the planning board did not support it, I think.
Oh, the.
Town meeting didn't support it.
Town meeting didn't support it.
Oh, that's, that's the strip that, what ties into.
Correct, Maple.
Maple, Maple?
Yeah.
In Monroe, the back of Monroe?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we were just talking as a board, just about how you have residential in the front and industrial in the back and, you know, they call it mixed, mixed lot. Just, I think we were talking to C, Central Mass Planning to try to help us address some of our lines.
Yeah, I guess we have no intention of doing anything.
Oh, no, no.
As part of this process.
No, no problem.
So lot number one, is that getting reconfigured also?
It is getting reconfigured.
So you've got four lots then?
Well, three as part of the residential compound and then you have lot one, which will be minimum zoning requirements, have minimum frontage off Maple. I, I think it is part of this project, answer your question. It's included as part.
Money.
Yeah.
So it's an additional lot.
Yeah.
Because you're taking.
For fee purposes.
Land, yeah. Taking land.
Right.
And giving it.
Yeah.
However you're doing it.
If you wanted to avoid that.
Yeah, so that's one thing we haven't really looked at. The next step, um, you know, after having this would be looking at the topo and then a profile and some drainage.
If you wanted to exclude that lot entirely, you should go through an A&R process first.
Sure.
Because one of the questions is we have to maintain 100-foot set, no disturb zone from Maple, is it?
Yeah.
Um, so technically that would include that lot.
Yeah.
Okay, so you recommend us.
But you're not.
Well, that's up to you.
Yeah.
We're just like.
We'd just require a waiver if we didn't do it.
Correct.
Because the existing house is looks, oh, you're talking about no disturb like driveway? Oh.
Right. No disturb, vegetated, that's the intent.
Okay.
Okay, so Boyd, any?
Nope.
Concerns?
No other concerns.
Moving forward.
Do you have any other questions?
Okay, so I guess the feeling of the board is that it's.
I bet.
Want to move forward? Please do.
We appreciate you taking the time out of your meeting.
Thanks for coming in. Good luck with it.
Huh? Oh, really? So do one year here.
Be honest.
Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
What?
I don't want to be.
No, it's not a stranger.
No.
Probably a turn.
I'm, I'm. Yeah, she's gonna be. Fifth year is the.
It doesn't.
It triggers things that.
Wow.
Like one. How many times? Two, one year?
All right, moving right along.
Arrow.
Anything you want to take on the board of bill?
We got five minutes.
What we got? Rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land waivers.
Oh, wait, is that, is that the draft?
Do we want to have a discussion on that tonight?
Do we have a, um, do we compile what waivers consistently?
What I've got here, I can do something for everybody because it's kind of ridiculous and large.
Check it out.
But this is a list of all the waivers for the 1, 2, 3, 4 most recent projects, Sleepy Hall, that aren't residential compounds.
Okay.
Uh, Sleepy Hollow, okay?
Yeah.
The Lane at Hunts Pond, Gilboa Court Extension, and Whitens Res Estates. Okay? So if you go across, these are the regulations and you'll see, okay, so this is an isolated one regulation for one project. The ones that have commonality, and I think that's what.
Yeah, the three hitters.
So let's, uh, see, gee, as we go down, we're looking at.
That's a four hitter.
Sidewalks.
Yeah.
Okay?
On both sides.
And then this one is street trees.
Yeah.
Sidewalks and street trees.
What's the one above it?
What's the one with the threes?
The hydrants?
Curbs and berms. This is the.
Concrete.
The concrete.
What about the one above it?
Oh, yeah.
This is, uh, stormwater. There was some, like, Gilboa Court had, have no berms, so they didn't have the stormwater system.
What's that narrow line, the next one up?
Gilboa Court and then Whitens Res. They're asking for maintaining runoff in Douglas Hill Way.
What's going on with that?
The project there?
Last I heard, um, they were internally transferring ownership of the project internal to the family.
Yeah.
And that was maybe, maybe a month or two ago, I heard that.
Okay, so.
Two of them?
Three.
Three of them? That's three.
Trees, sidewalks on both sides and curbing.
Trees, curbing and sidewalks on both sides, okay.
Okay.
Trees, you know my feeling on trees.
I agree.
I think we got a free roll, thumbs up there.
I'm with you on that one.
Um, my, my only thing about waivers is like sidewalks on both sides.
Depends on the project.
It, yeah, you never know what the project's gonna be. Some, someday a project may require sidewalks on both sides.
I'd rather have it as a waiver.
And it gives us, they're a bargaining chip. Waivers are a bargaining chip for us, I think. So, I don't want to remove.
Yes.
Things that we can.
Well, from my perspective, I think it boils down to a safety issue. Having lived in a project myself, where the sidewalks were proved on the opposite side of the road, and I knew that.
Yeah.
Bought my house, and then the guy builds it, and it's on my side of the road. So, you know, I mean.
I bet it happens.
Well, yeah.
Did the other side get, not get a sidewalk?
The other side did not get a sidewalk.
Must be that movement sidewalk deal.
Right, so now I got to kind of deal with the dogs, dog walkers.
That's what it is.
I had seen some circumstances where you're gonna want a sidewalk on each side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think leaving that one there and have it as a knockout.
Yeah, that's fair.
It's no big deal. The trees, I'm 100% with you on that. That's been across the board for the last.
Yeah.
How many years?
Yeah.
I've been here, what, six, seven years? I mean, everyone, that's across the board no matter what. But the sidewalks, I think, leave it there, and who knows? There could be a circumstance someday when it's like, you know what? Good chance of a lot of kids being here, maybe you want to leave that.
How confident are you that we'll never have a case where trees would be desirable?
An applicant may, an applicant could want it.
As long as Ernie's here.
But an applicant could want it.
Say, Ernie quit.
What it is, is location. I have no problem with the trees, it's where they want to have, the way it's worded now.
You create blind spots.
I mean, you drive around the town of Douglas, the trees are on the street. And that's gonna happen in 15 years, and we're long gone or whatever. And they're gonna say, what were they thinking back then?
They keep the sidewalks, they.
Destroy the road.
Well, that's not, people, you know, they weren't put in, it's because nature put them there, and then we built the road. You know what I'm saying? It's not like somebody said, oh, let's go put these trees in.
If you want to put a tree in your front yard, you go right ahead, but don't put it by the street. That's all that we're saying.
Don't put it in the right of way. This is, you got your road, Mike, okay, this is your road. Then you got, you got a grass strip, and then you got your sidewalk.
Yeah.
And if you're planting those trees in that grass strip, so the trees are growing out into the road, unless they heave in the sidewalks. You want to put one on your front lawn, that's fine. I just, I just don't see a reason for them in the grass strips. I think it's more of a hindrance than a help.
It is.
I agree.
Knowing that, backing out of driveways and things with trees.
Growing out.
Now, now you're blind sided. Yeah, when they're two inches in diameter is one thing, but when they're three feet in diameter, it's something different.
It would be longer.
And that's what happens.
But even now, the trees this big have been growing for a few years. The branches are right out in the road, you're whacking your mirrors on them all the time.
Crescent Lane is not like that.
The sidewalks are always starting to heave, huh?
Crescent Lane's not like that, and they had trees, right?
Crescent Lane?
Crescent Lane.
In other parts of the world.
Yeah, they have trees.
They did lawn, tree, sidewalk.
Well, that's part of the reason we did increase the width of the right of way, too. Because the street trees could be moved from that grass strip to outside the sidewalk. But the other thing to consider is, you know, John's constantly contacting me about two things with trees. Location, is it in the right of way? Because once it's in the right of way, and they become diseased, or they get overgrown, and become a safety issue, it's the town's burden to take them down and handle them.
And it's not cheap.
No.
No.
So.
Not in the right of way.
My main concern is that they planted in the grass strip between the road and the sidewalk, and that's no place to put a tree, in my opinion. If you're on, if you're on a public way. Right, that's just my opinion.
I agree. Drive down any of these streets in the wintertime with an eight-foot-six plow, then have somebody else come in with an eight-foot-six plow. And all you're getting is trees sticking up the whole side of you. Somebody's gonna stop. And it's no good.
So, we have to do the.
It's not safe. Very dangerous.
Of course.
Which ones are we thinking about?
Those trees that were there.
Put over time.
Just the what?
Just the trees.
Just the trees?
What was the, the curbing? Second time we're doing the curbing on the.
While we're doing it, we should also, because this is regulations, we should also look at the width of the residential compound.
Yeah, to 20. Go to 20, okay? Is that in our? In our regs?
I think 20.
That's in our regs.
Okay.
I have no problem with 20. What happens is, by law, you can drive anything 8.6, as we all know. Then your mirrors. That doesn't count mirrors.
Yeah.
8.6 with the vehicle, now you got another 10 inches each side of mirrors.
20.
Stop plowing, we all know, we get the plow trucks or whatever. Or it's a delivery truck running, it's only a compound. But still, you're creating a head-on, head-on. The possibility is always there.
So, 18 feet on that?
I'd say 20.
20?
20.
I'd say 20.
20? 20, because isn't that what we did with?
Remember, they're gonna be private roads.
I realize that.
I'm just saying.
It's a private road.
They can have as many as they want.
Oh, they're, oh, neither's.
I realize that. But there again, and we all know, right now, I mean, like the fire trucks, I know they gotta have some that are 8.6, of course. Right, so you got one going up, and now all of a sudden you gotta pump by having to come down.
Coming back, or?
And then two, 8.6 plus mirrors.
Right. You'll be out of here.
Somebody's gotta go in the ditch.
The only thing is that right of way thing.
Anything you want to leave us with, Bill?
Right of way thing.
The requirement, yeah, the 30, it should be 40.
Oh, 30 to 40?
Yeah.
What's this, 30 to 40 on right of way?
It says right of way, and then you've got frontage along the public way, as required is 50, right?
Well, you see, what they're talking about there, Trey, is the roundings for the paved apron. So, much like a road has, you know, the fanning out at the roadway. It's a stupid requirement.
Then you've got 40, and then you got the curve in at 30.
But, but that's technically in the street you're connecting to.
The curvature.
The apron. The paved apron's in the right of way that's perpendicular to the subdivision.
I guess, I mean, the right of way is actually 40, right?
Yes, so it tapers down from that to whatever.
To the entrance, it's all.
Well, I'm saying it has to be 30.
We can clean that up, too. I'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
But 20 feet on the driveway.
It's not clear.
20 feet on the driveway, that's what we're thinking. All right.
The whole way or just the initial?
Whole way. Wherever they're going.
It's just gravel base, it's not, we're not, we're not making them make it, you know.
Half a minute or nothing.
You know what I mean?
20 feet. In some cases, it could be paved.
It could want to.
The entrance, the entrance.
Talking about making a change.
Level fund, and.
No problem.
What?
That's what I.
We need to vote on that?
I would like a vote on that.
I thought we were questioning it by 40,000.
I'll make a motion to level fund FY19 budget.
There you go.
Second.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. All those in favor?
Hi.
All those abstain?
Thank you.
All right. So, I guess, um.
You too, Bill, thank you.
We'll, we'll take a look through the regs and see what else is there.
Yeah.
Because I think we come across a couple of these in the meeting, and I agree, the bargaining chip related to sidewalks, because it could be, you know, definitely a subdivision along the way. We're in agreement with the trees, I think, I think we're.
It's pretty to have sidewalks on both sides.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not for every neighborhood. It's not really, you know what I mean, and I get it, it's not for every neighborhood.
But if you come into a denser neighborhood, that's where you're gonna need it.
What was this thing with the curbing, though? You mentioned the curbing trees? Was that because it's?
The radius coming out of the, out of the subdivision.
Oh, would be granite.
Okay.
Yes.
Makes sense. Ah, that's subdivision.
Um, you know, the catch bases, I think the granite is no good, because you catch it when you're, when you have the plow, and then it pops it up versus feeling.
Talk to, you know what, talk to John, talk to John.
I think that's what somebody told us about the, around the catch basin.
That's the way it used to be, and we decided years ago that granite was better behind catch basins, because.
It stays there.
Yeah.
It's a little more solid.
Okay. I thought there was an issue with it.
No, I mean, if you hit it with a plow, you're gonna know it.
You're gonna feel it.
She ain't moving.
But you're gonna be, you'd be doing damage probably to the plow.
More than the.
Oh, yes.
More than the granite.
Okay.
Well, if it's the other way around, you will peel it up.
Yeah, and then everything starts deteriorating around it, and then you gotta rebuild the top.
Now, you're gonna mess.
Trying to remember what.
It stands a better chance of blasting with the granite behind it.
We have a ZVA application, and we have minutes, did you look at those?
Oh, minutes?
Okay, well, so we'll take this up again at another meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta circle back to that.
If you come up, and if he comes up with anything else after looking through our rules and regs, knock it down, and we'll discuss that at the same time.
Cool.
All right. Yeah, we got a pretty light agenda.
Just a comment on this tree issue. I've lived, I've owned tons of homes here, and then I've lived all around the country. And it is quite common in normal localities to have trees between the sidewalk and the pavement. But maybe they build the roads a little different there, I don't know, maybe, I mean, we got different issues here because it's Douglas, I understand. But you go to anywhere else in the country, and it is common.
Yeah.
Especially in the subdivision, to see trees between the pavement and the sidewalk.
I.
I don't disagree with you.
And they're not a problem.
Take a drive, have you ever driven around the city of Worcester? Want me to take you through Worcester someday? And I'll show you what it does? I have no problem whatsoever doing that. And I will show you exactly what trees will do when they're planted in that manner. Without a problem, and it won't take me long to find it.
No, I know what they'll do, I mean, they can do things, they can crack up the sidewalk.
And the road and everything else. And makes it worse.
And to your point, Mike, I do see, like, I want to say almost Jamaica Plain, where there's a big island, and there's trees there, and they're groomed, you know what I mean?
That's all I'm saying, there are times when it maybe makes sense.
I think that's a different, a different layout, street layout.
Yeah.
And I don't think we're, we're there when we're talking about the sidewalk to the street. That's probably not, again, to Ernie's point, it's not the ideal place, you know what I mean, for a tree, because of where it is. In an island where you've got a little more room, and maybe you have a six-foot strip, and you've got room to groom it, and you're not too much in the street. It's a different thing. And, and I think when you see some of these older subdivisions that are grown in, 20 years old and stuff like that, with this, you can see some, some issues and some.
But the tree selections could be different, too. You could go a little.
But.
No way, maybe.
We are then responsible for that trick.
Yeah.
So, there's. Ever ending cost.
If the grass strip was bigger, and it was more away from the road.
It's like Mike's saying, it's just, it's hard to grasp when you grow up.
Sorry, we can talk about trees online.
Okay.
All right, let's move on.
Whatever happened with that bond that was requested, the bond reduction? Remember, we couldn't make a motion because they were wanting the whole thing?
It's going to court.
Oh.
We're supposed to be getting summons, but I haven't gotten it yet. Has anybody else received a summons yet?
Nope.
You'll get it for.
They said they were gonna, they wanted it all back, and they were gonna go to court over it.
Okay.
This is the guy that jumped out on.
No, not Upton.
I don't know if they're pursuing it.
Okay.
I haven't received a summons.
Okay, so there would be a request for a reduction, and then we would act on that Stonegate transfer as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Oh, Stonegate?
Yes.
No, Stonegate, um.
Oh.
Bill was supposed to try to negotiate about.
Yeah.
Reducing the bond, but not the whole thing.
Right. But because the request was a full release, we put it back on it.
I thought you were talking about Upton.
Oh, no, no.
No, um, we haven't heard anything back from them. That's with Kevin Rafferty.
Okay. All right, I didn't know if I missed something.
No, you didn't. No. We were gonna notify them that we agreed to reduce the bond, but not.
Minutes?
She's trying to hold.
Clark, again, twice, we got two people now, I think?
No, no, I thought she was talking about the one that's taken it. I haven't received a summons on that either.
Minutes?
December? Rafferty's not taking it.
We got the minutes.
Yeah. Here you go, okay.
Decembers?
December 12th. I don't know how we've, how to properly handle this.
I didn't make any motions, did I, because I wasn't there?
The last time.
Exactly.
The last time we met.
Yes.
We approved these, draft one, we didn't say draft one, I said draft, but the last time we met, we approved with modifications the meeting minutes for December 12th.
This is right.
Now, this draft two shows up. But it has some of the items corrected, they correct, the tomatoes down there. But it's still got an error on page three, and I don't know.
Page three? Okay, where is it?
Under seven. What's the number seven, one, third paragraph, which says number nine below. That's supposed to be number eight below. So, what do we do? Reproved the second set of modifications?
You could approve it with modification, that if it's just one, one minor change.
Yeah, I mean, can you do that? You can show a separate draft?
Yeah. You can prove it with modification of that.
Does this note the, that you've optioned to approve the meeting, these meeting minutes? No.
No.
And then this one. Discussion.
See, I think this was written up.
It does say, yeah.
Before.
No.
She listened to our modifications from last time.
Yeah, so you do have that motion in the next meeting minutes that you already approved.
Oh, interesting.
Three minutes.
Yeah. As a amendment.
Which, so you have one number that you want to change on this draft, too?
Yes. Number nine should be number eight.
Okay.
The word that, not the eighth item, you see this.
See number nine below?
Yeah, that should be number eight below.
So, I think that's a friendly amendment, I don't know if that needs another motion.
Yeah. That's a who?
Friendly amendment for the.
Does that mean she'll change it in the final draft?
Yeah.
That's fine with me.
Yeah. Let the record reflect it, that we already approved these minutes.
I think they're not, yeah.
Mine should be number eight.
Yeah.
What do you got for January 12th?
Ninth.
January ninth?
Okay. We'll correct on final.
Yep.
So, it doesn't need a motion.
You could make a motion if you want.
No, I don't, I don't care, I mean, if we can do it without that, that's fine. All right, I looked at January 9th, which is the.
Yeah.
And just a question, I guess, I was confused when I read it, uh, seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Jellicore, Shore Road, one, two, paragraph three. Early sentence or so talks about Shore Road being a private way, private road. But the sentence, two sentences below where it says, "Miss Sharky asked if rights to the public way", yada, 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 were needed.